All right, first up is approval of the agenda. Then moved in second, Blake, is Michelle on? I forgot to ask. She is okay, thank you.
I'm here.
To approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign. Oh, she'll carry us. First up is Communities and Schools Benton Franklin Presentation Laura Hormiso, Amber Gonzalez, and Lupe. Mayor's Rojas, did I get it right?
Okay, pass it back. Okay. Perfect. Thanks, so? Okay, oh yeah, okay. Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Lupe, the Executive Director. We appreciate the opportunity to present in front of you all. I am going to pass it to Laura and she's going to talk about her work with students. And then I will close the presentation by talking about the community engagement part of that.
Hello, everyone. I'm Laura Hermosillo. A lot of us, a lot of my students, staff members, and families know me as Mrs. H. I am the Student Support Coordinator for Communities and Schools, and I'm currently stationed at Housel Middle School. We provide, well, I provide school-wide supports, which is Tier One, which is for all students. That includes family engagement support, attendance support, life social skill supports, enrichment motivation supports, academic assistance supports, physical health supports, behavior intervention modification supports, professional mental health supports. These reports aim to just address different areas of what our students may be needing at the time. The other supports that I provide are for individualized support for youth most at risk, and these are forty-five students, and they are case-managed. The only way that their case managed is through apparent consent. Last school year, ninety-one percent of my students improved their attendance. Also, we collaborated with the Housel FCC LA and the leadership. Last year, we organized a school dance, which was amazing for the kids. I think the kids really needed that. There was about three hundred and some tickets sold last year, and we just wrapped up our last Valentine's, this one on Thursday, and that was like two hundred and some tickets. And the kids enjoyed it and they loved it. I also provide and create different activities throughout the year to foster kindness and inclusion among students. The overall goal is to provide individualized support to encourage collaboration between schools or community and families to foster student success. And I will share a really small story about a family that I was working with since the student was a sixth grader, and he's currently an eighth grader, and they did not have a stable home. They were living in a moldy RV, considered McKinney Vento. The collaboration with the community and our staff members at the Housel Middle School and the resources that we have have helped me help that family get them into a sustainable, safe housing. And not just that, but also the collaboration with Marcy was very smooth. She was really good at jumping into the transportation, making sure that the rest of the siblings were under McKinney Ventos because some weren't showing up as that. The staff members at HMS were really quick. All the teachers, staff members gather up anything that the family needed at the time, and our community resources were really quick to donate things for that family. So that's just a small little story that I wanted to share. So I'll pass on to Lupe.
All right, so, um, yeah, so I'll talk a little bit about our partnerships. So we have been in the Prosser School District for the past eight years. We have had a great partnership. We've had a lot of community partners also come on board. So some of those community partnerships include Prosser Thrive, Mustangs for Mustangs, Ag West, some private donors as well. On top of just the local support that we get, we also, because we are affiliated, we also have support from our state office. And they also provide in-kind resources that we bring back to Prosser. And then also, we have support from our national office. So it's a really a network of support. All local dollars coming into Prosser State and Prosser, which is a great thing. And then in regards to some in-kind support, we have in-kind for food, clothing, school supplies, hygiene items, shoes, technology. One of the supports that we recently got was Souls for Souls, and so those are brand-new, brand-name shoes that we get and that Laura is able to access and bring back to Prosser. So again, just a lot of those resources that we're able to get. Also, uh, just so that you all know, so the Prosser School District contract is forty thousand, but we also partner with Prosser Thrive. So they provide a match, which is great. We're always looking for opportunities to do some of those matches, further decreasing the school district's contribution. We're always looking for other grants as well that we can apply to to sort of help offset some of those costs. After you figure in like the private donations, the actual cost per student, the district is around three hundred and eighty-five dollars per student, which is a great, great source of support. Like I said, we're always looking for different opportunities to continue offsetting that cost because we know that you all have, you know, there's a lot of things, right, a lot of costs that go into that, and we want to make sure that we're still providing students the supports that they need. Yeah. Any questions that we can take from any of you?
I think for the community, I think we should have someone define in-kind so that people understand in-kind.
Yes, yes, of course. So in-kind are donations of items that come to us. So sometimes we'll get donations of food, donation of clothes, school supplies, hygiene items. They're items that we don't pay for that donates them, or we have corporations that donate them or other companies that donate.
Communities and Schools has been with us for quite some time, and they're able to provide some support and services for families that we don't really have the resources in the district or the time to do what is more of the case management style versus just in, you know, counseling and things that are happening. And that extension goes to families. Even though they're at the middle school, families, we have kids at all buildings, so they're able to support those students as well if they're in the family that they're supporting through the middle school. So it really has added a layer of support and that we wouldn't have otherwise.
Yes, and thank you for mentioning that because we have provided over fifteen supports to schools outside of the school that Laura is at. So it's just, again, a great resource and support that we would offer. Any other questions?
Any questions, students? Michelle?
No questions, thanks.
Thanks, ladies. For the partnership.
Okay, next up is the Cat Cat Travel Debrief.
Genesis, the assist community at the high school.
I'm Neva.
Genesis, when you talk, you're gonna have to pull it pretty close.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm Genesis. I'm the Student Assistance Professional at the high school.
I'm Neva. I'm a senior at the high school, and I'm the Secretary of our Mustang Thrive Club.
Okay, so we just wanted to give you guys a little bit of a recap of everything that we learned at Cat Cat. This is my third time going, and I want to say that this, this time around, it gave us so much valuable information that I'm really excited to share with you all, and we're gonna start off with Neva sharing a little bit about her, her experience.
Um, this is my, this is my first time attending Cat Cat, and I'm very grateful for this great opportunity. I had lots of fun. I met lots of new people, and at the workshops, I learned a lot of new strategies that I think would be very helpful and useful to start using in our community for substance misuse and mental health awareness.
And for me, one of the key takeaways was we were able to attend several of the sessions. And what was really interesting to me was that there was a lot of focus in the actual work of prevention and how important it is to prevent future negative outcomes. And so what was really interesting is that the money that the state allocates for different things such as prevention, treatment, and law enforcement, prevention falls the shortest, but it has, it is showing that it's going to be the most effective. And so prevention is a key to long-term well-being. It reduces risks and creates sustainable solutions before bigger problems arise. And one of the things that really stuck with me was we learned a lot about the IPM, so that's the Icelandic Prevention Model. So in Iceland, in the early nineteen nineties, they were starting to, the rise of youth substance use was increasing by a dramatic amount of youth. And so what they did was they changed their approach to things by focusing on prevention. And so the way that they did this was they based it on a holistic approach. So they used all, involved everybody in the community, and they base it, and they tailored it to each community needs. So this included parents, the school, friends, anything that was a part of the youth's life, they included in this framework. And so the data that was gathered was, I mean, I'm mind-blown, I was speechless when I saw the data. So youth drinking from nineteen ninety-eight, it was at forty-two percent. By twenty eighteen, it was at six percent. The daily smoking in nineteen ninety-eight was twenty-three percent. In twenty eighteen, it was two percent. And the cannabis use was seventeen percent in nineteen ninety-eight, and in twenty eighteen, it was down seven percent. So that's, to me, it's a drastic change, and I think that, I mean, it'd be really, really nice if every state applied that, that model. And in addition, one of my favorite parts was we were able to attend a session with the DEA. And so the DEA really, it was eye-opening, too, and there was a lot of information that was shared from them. And one of the things that, it is scary to think about because there is a new drug now called Xylazine, which is a tranquilizer that they mainly use on elephants, and so now they are starting to include that in fentanyl. And although it's very, very common now in states like Philadelphia and New York, they're expected for it to make its way down. So that's why they focused on, you know, what are we doing now? We can, you know, increase our efforts in the work of prevention to be able to have safer communities for our kids to be in a safer state of mind, know the risks, and are well-educated before that gets to us. So that was really impacting for me. And, um, other than that, I mean, do you guys have any questions or comments?
You mentioned tonight and then in your pocket, too, about increasing peer-to-peer connections. Did you have any ideas or takeaways from that that could be implemented for more peer-to-peer connection?
Yes, so actually, another session that we attended was Johnny's Ambassadors. So that one, it was a mom who lost her son to cannabis-induced psychosis. And so after about four to five years of cannabis THC use, he developed schizophrenia. Became very paranoid, started thinking that the FBI was after him. He just was very delusional, and he sadly took his life. And so that motivated her to launch Johnny's Ambassadors, and she provides everything at no charge, which is youth-led or peer-to-peer education. She includes PowerPoints, the training that the youth need to be able to provide that education to their peers. And it is designed for middle school and high school students. So that is something that, with the support hopefully of our administrators and you guys, we are able to do in the near future. Any other questions?
I have a question on the Icelandic Prevention Model. Was this the first you've heard of it at this last conference?
I had heard of it before, but this is the first time that I learned more about it with the data, including the data.
Okay. I don't know how, I don't know how to really phrase this, but you mentioned it'd be nice to have more states do it, but is this something that you can implement just within like the community or the schools here locally, or and how would you might be able to do that?
I do believe that, I mean, at PHS, we have a pretty good support system with staff and just everybody in general. I do think that having Foster Thrive in our community, I feel like it does help bridge a lot of those gaps in the sense of getting community involvement, parent education nights, and really tailor all of the information to our needs of our own community, the common trends. As a SAP, I, you know, am able to know a little bit of, but at least with the students that I work with, what substances are being used, how often. And so that has helped, at least me on my end, to be able to be more tailor the needs and the services other students need depending on, on them as an individual. I do think that if we had more community involvement, parent involvement more than anything, because I do believe that we can improve on that a little bit more, we can definitely get to a good place.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, next up, is there? Blake, is there anybody signed up online to speak? Nope, okay, we'll skip there. Moving on to Student Representative Reports, Alexander, start with you tonight.
I do not have any yet.
Right, Kimmy?
Athletics, both boys and girls basketball advanced to the first round of state. Girls play on Friday versus West Valley Spokane. Wait. At West Valley Spokane versus Deer Park at eight p.m. Boys play on Saturday at Richland High School versus Ridgefield. Congrats to our wrestlers. Testing, hello?
Okay, there you go.
Congrats to our wrestlers that placed at state. Both Alexa Karosko and Rebecca Alavarez placed fifth. Julian Torres placed sixth, and Logan Myers placed eighth. And spring sports start on Monday.
Um, not too much for ASB. Our ASB president is starting her senior, uh, her ASB president project, and not too much else. Other than that, we have Fine Arts tonight, tomorrow, if you guys want to come out to see that. And I've been hearing a couple complaints about the bump outside of the stadium parking lot, like on the left side, or well, the first entrance to the stadium parking lot. There's like a speed bump type curb thing there that's kind of messing up people's cars, so.
I think it's been there as long as I've been here. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for student reps? Michelle?
No, thanks.
Great, thank you. Uh, moving on to discussion items, school building reports. Mr. Danny, Housel Middle School.
Thanks for having me. Just a couple wrap-up pieces. Tonight is the last girls' basketball game. They're playing Harrison. Then their season is over. A lot of growth this year. The boys' wrestling will finish with the super meet this Saturday, so that'll wrap up our winter two sports, and then we'll start spring sports here in a few weeks. We have a Student Incentive Reward Assembly this Friday. Students will be engaged in games of chance, as well as some very talented students and staff will be showing off their skills during a talent show. We'll also be singing "Happy Birthday" to the city of Prosser, who is having their hundred-and-twenty-sixth birthday. And then Jessica Huntington, who you'll get a care from a little bit later, has created a trivia. She does a trivia contest each week to see which swaddled class can get the, the highest number of answers correct. Did it around Prosser this week. And I've lived here for almost three decades, and I spent some time on the interweb trying to find some of the answers to the questions. So that'll be good for kids to kind of know a little bit more about the Prosser history and, and the city that they live in and represent at school. Silence is piloting, or Science, excuse me, is piloting a new curriculum. Sixth and eighth grade are the grades that are piloting that now. They're just jumping into some labs. Crystal was in there and has some videos of some of the work that they were doing in the labs. A lot of kids up and engaged and doing great work in there. So the teachers were excited about the pilot so far, and it seems to be really good. A lot of engagement strategies that are built into it, a lot of interventions built into it. Students are, are doing more sharing of their thinking and understanding, and they're building off of each other's knowledge. So that's been, been great to watch the work that they're doing there in their pilot. Wanted to talk real quick about the electives departments. They don't get a lot of the, the recognition sometimes. So in Family Consumer Sciences, the Foundations class was working on Cake Wars last week, and this week they're working on Food Truck Wars. Both of those, they plan the menu, budget, work on all that, and then they present it to the staff, and the staff votes on who had the best cake or the best presentation or the best, you know, enchilada or whatever they're making. So they're gonna be working on that. Seventh grade finished their Cupcake War, so not Cake Wars, we'll work on that next year, Cupcake Wars this year. And then this week, they've been working on financial decisions for, or financial, personal finance and roadmap to financial decision-making that they have. They had a guest speaker come in, and then this week I was able to sit in on class where they were learning about herbs and spices from the Old World and the New World, and how those are used to, to cook and to, to develop menus for, for historical and current menus. Sixth grade is, and, and I was, I have some pictures of this, so on the, on the March newsletter will be in there. They created some dough that they used for pizzas and cinnamon rolls, and then they're working on rethink your snack and drink by creating posters to put up around the school to promote healthier eating habits. So that's good. SEC LA has four kids going to state. Professional presentations, one on anti-cyber bullying, and then one on Tropical Twist, which is having healthy beverages for less than ten percent of the daily recommended sugars in the drinks. So really trying to find some, some healthy work there. In art, they're studying artists and art history, and then they're doing self-portraits based on the, the artists that they select. Seventh grade's working on optical illusions. I was in there yesterday, very impressive work with some of the work they're doing on visual 2D illusions. And then the eighth grade is working on their digital art. And in STEM class, they're working on robotics. They've built robots at the eighth grade level. Seventh grader working on code.org where they're learning about conditionals, loops, event blocks, and they're getting to see what all of that coding does to the program of a little robot that they have, so they get to see that. And then sixth grade, they're working on 3D printing. So we got them some 3D printers, or we didn't. CTE, the program, got some 3D printers. They're working on CAD, Tinker CAD, which is a smaller version of it, but then they get to build models using the 3D printer. So they've got some products that they can see their programming and work come to life in front of them. So art, Family Consumer Science, and STEM are all active, all doing things that build on top of each other. They connect with the elementary to build off of what they've learned and work with the high school to help support the work that they're gonna be doing at the high school. So our electives program is, is up, running strong, and, and getting after the Housel Middle School.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael?
How many of you get one elective a year?
Well, they, they get one class of elective, but since we're on trimesters, they get three rotations if they're in the rotation. But if they choose band, then band is there, choir, choir, you know, that, there are some year-long, but the majority of them are trimester, and then they rotate between all three of those opportunities. That's the majority of our students who are in that.
Any other questions? Thanks, Michael.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up is Food Services Director Darlene Morrow.
Darlene, will you pull that closer? Oh, is it on? Is it green or red? Push it to green.
All right.
There you go.
So far for going on in our department this year for 2025, is we started a salad bar at the Housel Middle School where students get to go through the line and make their own salads with fresh produce. We have been inspected by the Health Department this year for our second time at Heights and at PHS, and we have received a hundred percent on our inspections. We had a apple tasting test at the middle school on February eleventh where we had Meet the Farmer, which was Mark Rollin from Old Fellow. And he brought samples of freeze-dried apples and dried apple rings for the students to test. And the students liked the freeze-dried apples the best. We're still using grant money that we received from the Farm to School WSDA. We are purchasing our fresh apples from Rollin and Hawkins each week. We have purchased ground beef from Snipes Mountain Ranch that we used for nachos this month, and beef patties from Holy Cow Better Beef, and we had the Great American Cheeseburger this month. In the month of March, we will be celebrating National School Breakfast Week, and the theme is Clue Into School Breakfast. We would like to invite each one of you to come to one of our schools to be there at breakfast, to help service or help serve breakfast or pass out little stickers to the students. And the end of March, we have Andrea Ocho from Tri-Cities coming to PHS to do a microgreens tasting with our Farm to School grant money, and we will be having two different types of microgreens for the students to test. One will be radish-flavored, and the other will be broccoli flavors. So if you'd also like to come down and do a taste testing on the microgreens and give us your opinion. Um, I have right here the pamphlet for our Clue Into School Breakfast. It just gives you some information on the breakfast program and that it started in nineteen eighty-nine to raise awareness for students that needed to have breakfast each, each morning. I also have on the very, the back, the different times of when we serve breakfast at our different schools. Any questions?
Questions? All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on is the capital facilities planning.
Um, this has been something that's been, the board has tasked me with since I've started, about how we're going taking care of our facilities and so forth long-term. Um, this is in draft form. It basically just talks about the different pieces that we are trying to do, making good use of our money, who's getting involved, and how we're gonna review this. And so we have our first capital committee meeting, and I should know the date. It's next week, but I can't remember. I think it's Thursday. I could look when I get on and I could pull up my calendar in just a moment. Oh, see, that's why you have an amazing assistant, like, it's March sixth, thank you. Oh, so it is next Thursday, so I did all right. So we've invited community members, and if you are listening tonight or you would like to participate, we'd love to hear it and hear from you. We're looking for all various stakeholders in the community to join, because you need different perspectives when you're looking for things long-term. I had a fun joke with a gentleman who was calling me and asked me, and we're looking for somebody maybe younger than me. And we were, he said, what do you mean? And I said, well, if you sit on the committee, we'd like you to be able to look longer than twenty years down the road. I don't think I'm gonna be on the capital committee. I'm hoping to be retired on some beach somewhere, so. I, in other words, we're looking for all age groups and all different people to come and sit with us. I'm welcome any questions, but this is where we're starting from.
Any questions for Kim? No, I think it looks good. It's a good, a good start, very organized, so I appreciate that. Uh, moving on to the item four is Review, Review of Policy and Procedure Thirty-four Twenty-five, Anaphylaxis Prevention and Response.
So there was a change in the law a little while back that allows districts to have a standing order of EpiPens in stock to address primarily unknown allergies if a student were to come along with an unknown allergy, because our students that have a Because our students that have um, a life threatening allergy would have an EpiPen, should have already have an EpiPen on in on hand to be at school. But this allows us to stock EpiPens um, to have available if there were to be an unknown allergy. And we've had those happen occur at school. And when that happens, we, although you still would have to call 911, your only solution is to call 911 because you don't have a way, you can't give them somebody else's EpiPen. Um, it's been around for a little while, for several months, but we couldn't get the EpiPens and we have recently been able to get about half of the EpiPens. There's a we basically get them for free, but getting them is the challenge. You've probably heard there's a shortage. Um, but we do have some EpiPens on on hand. And so we need to move forward and get the policy in place so that those can be available. Um, there is, you have to have training. That's normal. We've had that up, you know, for years. We do EpiPen training every year at the beginning of school. Um, there is in the law, if it is an unknown allergy, only the nurse can administer the EpiPen. Otherwise, if it's a known allergy, other trained staff can. Um, they can administer it themselves. So uh, you know, a student who's able to administer it themselves can do it, but little kids can't. And usually kids who are students or or adults that didn't know they had an allergy may not be feel prepared to do that. So um, this would give us the opportunity to have the EpiPens here and um, use them if we had an emergency.
I have one question. I, and I'm, I don't know enough about it, but um, I know, I think EpiPens are based on size, right?
They are.
Every
Yeah.
person would have their own. If if
There's just two kinds. There's kids and adults.
And adults. So if we have those, um, and and we say it's an emergency and an allergy, is there any liability to the district by giving them that?
No, because um, one, there's a policy in place and it's the Good Samaritan law. You're trying to to help someone and it's, it's, it's um, epinephrine. It's not going to hurt you. You don't feel a rush or a charge from it. Um, I myself have, have, my son has life threatening allergies. And so he went through all through school with, you know, he had to have an EpiPen on site, but um, it raises the awareness. I, we see a lot more allergies, particularly to peanuts and tree nuts than we've seen in the past, but we also see them for fish and eggs and milk, all bees, bees, although that's, I mean, I think the nuts, the nut situation, there's a lot of that. So there are things that come along. A kid who never ate kiwi before and then eats kiwi and because we served it in school lunch, right Darlene? Yeah, that's we, and that is one that is a pretty common. I mean, well, not common, but when we get a reaction, it's because kids have never had kiwi and all of a sudden they have it. Oh, this is good. And then oh, my throat's itching. Um, and don't feel well. So um, it's, it, it's just the opportu, like I said, opportunity to save someone who, if we can't get a ambulance there fast enough.
Other question? Did you say we did it? We do have some on hand?
We have just recently received some doses, about half of the doses we ordered. So we do have some on hand. The other thing is, and I actually, we didn't, I haven't talked to the nurses about this. We'll have, we'll have a discussion about it, but if a student has life threatening allergy and they don't have a prescription, they can't come to school. So if, if we have these on hand, it maybe would alleviate that problem, especially if there's a challenge getting a pin because of shortages. Sometimes you go to get the prescription and you have to wait. So, yeah, and they're super expensive. But we get them for free.
Well, that's nice. Um.
That's not normal, but yeah, in this case it's great.
So at this point, we can administer it till this is approved.
Correct.
So is this gonna be on the next?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Diana. Uh, moving on to uh, review of policy and procedure thirty two forty one, student discipline.
So for those of you who have opened your board packet and those who are sitting in the audience, this is about this thick. Um, so I, I'm going to, because this is a discussion item, right? I, I wanna talk about it and tell you what I know and what I can explain up to this point. Um, policy thirty two one forty one um, comes about for changes in the discipline laws. They were legislatively changed in August and then some pieces came about. We, if you remember right, we talked at a board meeting about all of the administrators went to a training a few months ago. I put on your desk today um, what the, the discipline handbook that the ed administrators received at that training. As kind of a piece for educating you about what these are. To the public that's listening tonight and to those in the audience, the big one is some language change. And putting some responsibility back in the teacher's hands. And removing the term emergency expulsion. And adding a word term called emergency removal. I'm gonna look over my shoulder here to Diana because she's gonna correct me if she thinks I'm saying anything incorrectly, because this is new law, right? And we're, we're learning it together. But it works like this. When a student, when a situation happened in a classroom, regardless of the age, and we were like, we have to investigate this, there's a problem. We would notify this, hold the student, notify the parent that we are releasing the student in a form of what's called emergency expulsion. What that means is until we're done investigating, the student is not allowed on school property. Pretty much period. That's about all it said. It didn't say the student was guilty. It didn't say the student was innocent. It was not expelling them. It was a term that was used to keep them off property, off our um, like from going to a game and different things. What happened in that law is it said, but when the investigation was done, they had to have it changed. Or their discipline then became a one day suspension, a three day suspension, a long term suspension and expulsion. There was discipline related to it. With emergency removal, emergency removal says this exactly the same thing. We're removing you from the school environment while we investigate. But if you think about it, sometimes you do an investigation and the person or situation is innocent. In this case, they would not receive any discipline. The emergency removal is not a disciplinary action on their permanent discipline record and their attendance is changed to non disciplinary in nature. Okay, so that's a big one that's in here. Anything on emergency removal that I missed?
I think the reason behind the change, part of it is understanding when we say you're emergency expelled, they, it sounds like you're gone forever. Well, it was never that. Even with a firearm on, a firearm on campuses, a one year mandatory was a one year mandatory long term. Basically, it's a long term suspension, but eventually the kids get to come back to school. So I think some of it was semantics and people being more clear on what it meant. And an emergency expulsion never stayed on a kid's record. It always had to turn into something else. So this is, I think, I don't, I think the purpose might, I'm making it a little easier, like not confusing with what expulsion versus we're removing you for right now, but then there's gonna be something else. There always was before. But I, I mean, I think that's part of it.
And then the next piece um, is allowing some teachers, or not some, allowing teachers the ability to control discipline in their classroom. And let's do young children at this point. Um, student X is, is struggling with behaviors and or just being focused today. Um, and the teacher says, you know, I know student X, um, and they just need per se that timeout idea, right? So we're going to send them to my neighbor teacher next door and they're gonna chill out for a little bit and come back. That doesn't necessarily have to be a discipline in nature. There's some rules about keeping your eyes on the student the whole time. There's some different pieces. But allows the, then the teacher to contact the parent, says by law, they have to contact the parent. But they contact the parent, they put a plan in place and that student is not removed from, for disciplinary purposes. Okay, another example, um, as a high school teacher. Um, there would be situations that would happen and I just knew by how they walked in the classroom, something wasn't right. Um, home, I don't know, fight with their girlfriend or boyfriend, um, argument with the teacher before, something. It would have allowed me to say, you know, um, student X, I'm gonna have you work in the library today. Here's your assignment. Here's what we're working on in class. I'm gonna make sure you make it to the library, meaning I have to see you, right? I have to have my eyes on you all the way. And you're gonna do that. And this is what we're gonna do today. Versus the situation that comes up when, you don't wanna work today? Fine, go to the office, you're out. And then they end up being removed from the educational environment. And then, and it becomes a negative in their discipline. So what we brought to you today and the reason it's so big is you have our old policy. Um, Selena is very gifted at doing the legal red line. So it allows you to see where the difference. We did talk a little bit about, um, do I have any English teachers here today? Um, so you'll see that if, for example, one of the red lines that it does is it takes out our word bored with a capital B and makes it with a little b. So it always comes up as red line. Well, uh, my English teacher taught me that if I can say the Kim, it's supposed, I don't say the Kim, so Kim has to be little, right? Or I'm just saying. So the reason I'm joking about that is there's a lot of things in that that is red lined for a period or a comma or a capital letter or something like that. What we're really focusing in here is on the language. The reason this is sitting in front of you is this is what's going to impact our student handbook changes for next year. It also impacts what we need to work with our teachers association. And what language needs to be handled inside the teacher's contract. Um, it's not any more or less work necessarily. It's just possibly, I was at a superintendent's meeting and they said something like, and I wasn't a principal in the years, but it's like we went back to 2010 all over again, where the, some of the empowerment's going back to the classroom. Um, so that's what's there in front of you. I'm welcome for any questions, but it is something you're gonna get to do that great old reading on and kind of read through. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them now, but that's what's in front of you now.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Kim?
I actually
Right now? Did you finish reading it?
No.
Um, we have a couple of principals here that were at that training. Did I miss anything or anything you'd want to add just while they're reviewing this?
I would just add that the thing about the, the piece with teachers, like a kid could be in class and be like very agitated, like the teacher just recognizes they need to be out of class. And in the old language, if they remove them from class even for a break, that is a suspension. When you're doing it, because maybe it's what's best for the kid. So this does change that to a more like that, there's that teacher discretion and decision making on maybe an alternative location might be better for that child today. In the, in the old law, that's a suspension. And in this law, it's not.
Brian came up. He must want to talk. Oh, okay.
He does not want to talk.
He doesn't want to talk about this. He's just So um, to anybody who's read the documents online or has anything, Diana and I would love the questions sold out. We can't help because one of the things we found is the more we read and research, then in turn, the more we learn. So.
Any other questions, students? You got? Question? Great, thank you. And moving uh, to number six is review of policy and procedure, twenty four ten graduation requirements.
So Brian's gonna come up and join us. So um, we have for as many years as I've been here and probably longer had a higher, there's, there's a few things. One is our graduation policy needed to be updated. It hadn't been updated for several years. It had multiple years of graduation requirements because the law changed like three or four times over a span of about 15 years. So this cleans that up. It's a little more concise and a little easier to read than, than our previous policy and procedure. But um, recently in conversations and historically, we have talked about we have a three and a half credit social studies requirement. The state only requires three credits. Um, so in Kim and I and Brian's discussion, um, we made the decision to go to the state requirement three credits. It does impact our staffing and to have that additional half a credit requires us to have an extra teacher to teach extra credit a year to cover those four, basically four classes. So um, Brian worked on this with his teachers. We met with his teachers to let them know and they, they've come up with some plans to adjust. Um, our co, course offerings for social studies and history.
They have, um, they, I will say they are not happy about this. Um, moving from three point five to three point oh, uh, it was not an easy conversation with our social studies department. Uh, page four of the draft procedure, uh, thirty two forty one and it
Thank you.
That one definitely is battery.
Blake's coming, so talk really loud until he gets here.
Thirty two forty one. Um, on page four. Um, this is, you go after the So we're looking at this procedure specifically. Uh, these two, I would make a change on this one. We've got one now social studies credit, but a bunch of these are temporary world problems.
What, and this is with feedback from the department. With feedback from the department. Thank you, Blake. One half social studies credit must be in contemporary world problems. And then I would red line out everything else until you get to courses with emphasis on contemporary world problems may be accepted as equivalencies. Meaning, we are teaching, we are going to teach contemporary world problems for one trimester for a point five credit. If students come to us and they have classes that they've taken at other high schools and they transfer in and they have an emphasis on contemporary world problems, we could count that as an equivalency when we look into that curriculum. Okay, the rest of those things on there, we don't actually have. Okay, uh, and so that's, I would suggest making that change to number two. Number three would stay the same. Number four reads one social studies credit must be in an elective course or courses. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. I'm, number two needs to be split again. So one half social studies credit must be in contemporary world problems. I would follow that up with one half social studies credit must be in world history. And that was one of the recommendations from our staff was to, we want to continue to keep world history in there, but now students would get the option to choose between time periods. Renaissance would be, would be one that, and I have my notes, I left my notes in the building, but um, for example, Renaissance through, like, I'm not a historian, so I can't even tell you there.
I would say they said like
And then world history B would be, for example, uh, through World War Two or World War Two history. So you'd have the option, students would have the option to choose world, world history A or world history B for a total of point five credit instead of a one point oh, uh, that we currently have. I see a brow. Are you, you have a question? You had a brow. You had a brow.
Okay, I was, I do though, so it's fair. And I had a, okay, so I, I'm tracking with you and I agree with you on that.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll
There's one more. Okay, I'm sorry for calling you out.
Well
Apologies. Alright, um, and I'm doing this without my glasses. So for the, you younger kids, yes, I'm doing this. Okay, um, number four would stay the sa, no, number four would change. Because we're changing to three point oh credits instead of three point five. We still want to offer all of our elective courses. Our staff has worked really hard to be able to offer those. Um, we feel like
And I'm gonna stop right there.
Yep.
There was some social, I don't wanna say social media, but there was some um, talk about cutting like college and the high school or AP classes. That is not what this is about. Our rigor at our high school is going to remain as equal or whatever, as it's always been. Or even maybe improving. Um, so I just wanted to dispel that rumor for the public record, for anybody who's listening. So I just wanna
Yeah, we're actually adding a college and the high school history course this year that we didn't have. Well, this coming year that we don't have now. So I just wanted, there was some talk about that and I want
AP US history and they are adding another uh, college and the high school course that uh, would take the place of our high school civics um, as a college level course. As a college level course. Uh, but the requirement itself stays the same and it would be one, one half of that credit would be in civics. And then number four, again, one half of a social studies credit would be in an elective course or courses. Students can still take more, they can still have the option. We're not asking to change the graduation requirement, we're not reducing that at all. Uh, so students still need to take twenty six and complete twenty six credits. Um, we're just changing the language for contemporary world problems and reducing a half of world history. Uh, and then number five is a little bit different. Um, although a student does not need to receive credit for such a course, a student must, and I would strike through complete and I would say pass. Students must pass a Washington State history or, and government course. They don't have to receive credit for it, most of our students actually take this class and pass it in. But there are some that don't, and so they then take it at the high school. And the kids that do take it at the high school do receive credit for it and a passing grade, but they have to pass that class in order to graduate, that is required.
So the one thing I would say in this draft policy or, and procedure, it has a total number of credits of twenty four and it is not the plan to go to twenty four.
Yeah, the plan isn't.
It should be twenty six.
So again, this came from sample was the policy and we have to adjust it to, to match our district.
Everything else stays the same.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not, we're not changing any of the other departments or requirements, uh, the other ones all match, what we do at the high school match the state requirements. AP US history is staying.
I think the piece that is, there's lots of ones again, red lines, right? I think the other piece is that the half a credit that used to be three point five is now in the elective category. So the twenty six stays the same. So a student can still choose to take three and a half credits, but it's a choice versus a required three and a half. And for everybody who's listening and I'm looking at my students over there, this starts with the class that's coming in next year. You have to know what's expected of you when you start school.
I, I am not sure on that one, actually.
Well.
We have to have more discussion on that. Our last discussion was that if we are requiring more, then it had to start with your incoming freshman.
You're correct, and I stand corrected, I stand corrected, you're correct, I, I stand corrected.
So would this mean that the college level civics would become an elective class? And not our.
Still have civics, but we're adding, so if kids don't wanna. If they wanted to take the college civics, it's kinda like biology. So you have bi- regular biology and bio one oh one, so now we would have civics and a.
It's like polycite one.
Polycite one ten, is that American government?
Yeah.
Um, but it's the equivalent of civic, so you could take either or. Any questions?
I, I probably need a little clarification, I've got, so if we go back to one, D one. That's gonna go from one to a half.
Okay, sorry, I'll find it again.
Social studies, US history.
So D one. Uh, one social studies cre- credit will be in, must be in United States history, that stays the same.
Okay, that's it, okay, that's where my map. And then a half.
Two, number two gets split into two parts. You have a half a credit of contemporary world problems and a half a credit of world history. That world history, students can choose between the two sections that we offer, the two timeframes of, of world history that we offer.
That's the half of. Thank you. Any other questions for Brian, you and then Kim? Great, thank you. I would assume all these, you're getting discussion will be on next.
Yes, N- Nelson, they will go to first reading, so if anybody has questions between now and then, um, we would always entertain that discussion.
Thank you. Uh, next up is the.
Blake, you wanna put on the PowerPoint?
Oh, Prosser School Di- District Data Review.
So we had talked about doing, um, a data review, the board had asked for that, um, previously and we had done our second round of iReady. There is so much other data, so really I did some district level data and the buildings did some building data, but there's, it's kinda hard to narrow it down. Um, in some respects, uh, because we are doing a lot of work with data. But if you wanna go to the next slide, Blake, this first is just the overview of some of our district data from our, the report card. Is it working, Blake? Go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, it's gonna be hard for you to read on there, so hopefully you have it in front of you. Um, it talks, it shows what are, our students that are, um, getting college level percentages, ELA, math and science. And then down below that is students who've got that foundational grade level knowledge. We did last year and this is twenty three, twenty four data, we have twenty five, thirty nine, that was probably what was reported in October. And then it also shows the breakdown of the different programs that we have, the percentage of students in those programs, um, as well as our race and ethnicity. Go ahead, Blake.
Deanna, could you, Blake, go back one real quick, could you explain the difference between the top set of numbers on the left and the lower? Thirty four point seven versus sixty one.
So the top set of numbers, the students earned a three or a four. And then, uh, the sixty one, the one, the bottom set of numbers is what they are considering foundational knowledge, so that basically level two and up.
So would that equate to proficiency or?
Um, it would, it would, like, it would be equate to, uh, great, like, graduation standard.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, go ahead, next one. This is just, um, a brief info, a little bit of information, this comes as, we get what's called WISIP data, so they do some other measures that isn't just, uh, the proficiency on a state assessment. Our graduation rate last year was ninety one percent. Um, our regular attendance, uh, this has been seventy four point five, it sounds very low, but this has continued to grow since COVID because it was much higher before COVID and. Went, jumped really low, so that's about a four percent improvement from the previous year. Our ninth grade on track, that's another area we've been working on, they were at fifty eight point six percent, so that means they didn't fail any classes as a freshman. Um, they could even fail a class and then recover it, but they still wouldn't be considered on track if they failed any classes. And that had with the work that they've been doing, specifically David's leading that, they had seven point three percent growth from the previous year. And then dual credit, um, this is one I'd love, like to see us grow because we have a lot of classes at the high school. So this is any CTE, college and the high school, running start, um, it could be AP if they earn credit on the AP test. We have about fifty six percent of our students are earning adult credit class before they graduate. And then our kindergarten readiness, and this really does go up and down because every group of kindergarteners is different. Um, but last year, thirty three percent of our kindergarteners were, um, had kindergarten readiness in all six level, six areas that we test, that are tested once they start in Kinder. Coming into Kinder, yeah. Um, and there, you know, it, so there's six areas that they're assessed on, so there's a lot of kids that had five. And kids that had four, and then there's kids all the way down to like one, so, go ahead, Blake.
Think, um, with the amount of, with the increase in our TK program, do you think that would, uh?
The year before it was sixteen. The year before it was sixteen percent. It is, but every group is different, so like next year, I mean, cuz there are a lot of, we have, the majority of the kids are coming in with no. Uh, most of our kids come in with no early learning experience, of course, there are a lot more now, we have our two E cap classes, we have our three TK classes. But I'm gonna talk about that in the report about, um, the possible loss of those based on what's happening in the. Federal and state legislature. Um, so I, Jody, Kevin, did Jesse talk you into doing hers? Jesse was not feeling well, Jesse wasn't feeling well, so she's joining us maybe online? Okay. She, oh, so Kevin, Kevin is talking for her. Oh, yeah, she wasn't feeling well, so she had gone home this afternoon, so Kevin is, is stepping in for her.
So the. So the first one here is iReady Math and it shows the fall and winter comparison. Um, you can see that there was a lot of growth, um, moving students across from red to yellow. And then yellow to green and then green to mid or above grade level. And then, uh, the first one is like I said, the fall, you can see the number of students at each one of those levels below. And then winter, you can also see the movement with, uh, forty seven, forty one, two forty five, twenty eight. And then zero, and the reason why they have zero for three or more, you can't go three or more at K two, so that data is not gonna be available until they get older. Um, a note down here is that, uh, number and operations was their lowest domain in all grade levels and they've taken that. And they're starting to really narrow it in and look at, at numbers and operations. And then during the PLC time, uh, iReady has comprehension checks for math. And so they're going through numbers and operations and using those comprehension checks to determine what areas and number and operations that they really need to work on in the next steps.
Next slide, Blake.
Have a quick question, um, on this slide. It looks like, you know, and you, you look at the trend and it is increasing, you know, you saw. What is it, like a seventeen percent reduction in the, uh, numbers that were one to two grade levels behind? You know, to get up to twenty four percent and on grade level or above. That, we're sitting at twenty four percent now, so I guess my question, I know we're seeing growth, we're seeing that. How do we get it from twenty four percent to fifty percent?
Well, she started, uh, what she's doing now is you start to use the data that you have. And you, you start measuring more often, i- if that makes sense, not bigger tests. Um, it might be one problem and you, you start to do that daily measurement. And make adjustments on a daily basis, it's the daily instruction that's happening and the adjustments to the instruction. That's gonna have the greatest impact and movement in kids. And we're not quite there yet, but we're trying to. And the better data points that we have, cuz iReady really is a benchmark, so three times a year. Um, it can be more of an autopsy than, well, we've talked about that a little bit, kinda too late. We need in the moment, like in our, in our reading, we have in the moment data that can, teachers can use that data, make adjustments to strategic groups on a daily basis. And address their needs. We're not quite there yet.
And, and part of that speaks to the curriculum we have for reading supports that, the curriculum we have for math does not. So, and I think you'll see that on this slide here, for sure.
Thank you.
And this is, this is the reading growth from KRV, so again, it's the same, uh, format as, uh, she, she had for math. And I also cop, basically copied what she had because she was the first one to put it in. Uh, so you can see the movement of students, uh, from the fall to the winter and those greens getting bigger. I'm really, I told the PLC today that I'm, I'm, green might be my favorite color now, uh, the more green I see, the happier I get.
Can we talk about the bottom graph a little bit, can you explain that one a little bit?
So this is the ARC data and this tells you, um, how many kids or what percentage is at the emergency level at risk and then at proficiency or above? And then the number of students. I'm, I'm assuming one of these is Erla and Anil, but I'm not quite sure.
I think that's correct, so the first row with the thirty nine, seventy nine, two forty three would be the English reading assessment. And then the six, nine and fifty two would be her dual language kids in the Spanish reading assessment.
Uh, so you can see that I basically.
Go to the next one, Blake.
I basically use the same slides, um, we have older students also, so you can see that, uh, uh, three or more grade levels are, are on there and there's percentages. Um, getting it down to the single digits is really important, it's one of our goals, it's getting that three or more grade levels down to single digits and also. The reds down to single, single digits, not quite there yet in the red. Um, and then increasing the, the greens. Now, one thing that I'm kind of excited about is the number of yellows. And the percentage of yellows, and you also saw that with KRVs, because these kids are, are right there. That i- i- if we can get those kids to move, that's a large percentage of kids. And we want all of them to move, but if we can get those yellows into the greens, there's a big, big chunk that's available there.
Kevin, can you explain, um, just for those who are watching or listening? When, in the number at the bottom of the first part shows twelve students, um, at three or more grade levels, right? From thirty one, how many students are in your building?
Uh, around two fifty.
So we're talking twelve students of two fifty, I think that's relevant to this conversation. I think when you look at a graph and you don't know the number that's in the whole graph, right? And then I just, I just think that for when we're doing public presentations, I think that's relevant.
And I also will state that here over the last few weeks, we're having kids exit interventions. And we also are having kids exit special. And I think as this continues, cuz every year is gonna get better. We were part of doing a national webinar with ARC, the reading company that we have adopted, uh, last Thursday. And part of the reason why we were asked to do that, and I, I don't know if you're sharing the other part with the data later, well, she'll share a little bit more. They're asking us because they're seeing an impact in, in our district and wanting that data. Um, and that's why they also asked us to present, is, so it's slow and it's going to be because it's not gonna happen quickly, but it is, it is starting to shift.
Well, and when he says present, this is a, uh, it's a one hour webinar, but ARC is a na- a national company. They're in hundreds and hundreds of districts with thousands and thousands of kids. And they were one of four districts that was asked to present on the webinar because of what they're seeing and how the curriculum is working for them. And I'll talk a little bit more about some other stuff that ARC is hoping will do with them, so. You ready for your next slide? We'll have Blake.
Um, and then you also see the, here again, this is, this is reading and this just is the different movement of students progressing. To, to the left and that's really what we want, again, getting the three or more grade levels down to a single digit. Our goal by the end is to get the reds down to a single digit. And, uh, we're continuing to work, and like I said, these are benchmarked, they're kinda just giving you a glimpse of what's, what's going on. You kinda have to dig a little bit deeper or use some of the assessments that I ready to get, like standards mastery, which really assesses a particular standard. To really kinda start seeing the movement.
You know, Kim, can you just talk about that bottom graph with all the different domains?
Yes, so those, when a reading's assessed, it's broken down into these domains. And this, all of these are on the assessment, except for, if you notice under phonemic awareness, there's a bunch of gray there. Because most of our kids have graduated out of that. So it's, you're looking at, you know, your kindergarten kids, uh, maybe through second grade, which I'm gonna tell you, uh, wasn't always the case. A few years ago. Uh, we still had upper level kids that were still working on, uh, phonemic awareness and, and phonics. And that continues to shrink as years go by and especially with this, with this program.
Go ahead, Blake to the next one.
Um, and these numbers right now are already old, it's already old data and we put this out a week ago. These numbers have already gone up again. Um, so this is our new program, which is, like I said, it's daily. Inputs put in daily, those adjustments are doing, being made daily. And, uh, the percentages are, E- Eneel has gone up, I think it's to fifty nine and the Erla has also gone up to forty five. When you look at Wistrans Erla data, that also includes all of our bilingual kids, but in English. So even our kindergarten kids that are learning eighty percent Spanish and only twenty percent English is included on this test. And, um, we have. You know, the state has recommended that we have a bilingual program. One of those things, we, I don't think we can go without a bilingual program. I wish, because I'm telling you right now, some of our. I wish, because I'm telling you right now, some of our Spanish speaking kids are. Are really good at Spanish and we're starting to see it with this program where. You know, they're at reading middle school level in Spanish, but then when I get to the SBA there, it's it's in English. So one of those things, if I had some power to like, well, if you're going to require a bilingual program allows these kids, then if you're really after knowledge. Allow them to test in Spanish. But that's me. If you're not, don't require it.
One more Blake.
Uh this is just similar data that um Deanna had put up, so I I just kind of matched what she put up, so you could see it, a different building. Or at our building, um again, it's the same college um track for college level learning and then the foundational skills. And then a demographics, and this is uh about growth, so this is the report you can pull off about the different demographics and how. They're growing. And if if you notice, the majority except for. What we're in school improvement for, uh which is um students with disability, if you look at the other demographics, they're actually. Exceeding the bottom one or matching. Jody, did you want me to step up here?
You want him to just talk about your data too?
I also kind of did the same thing, we all took Jesse's lead. And so if you look at our um heights data for I ready reading. Um we've kind of broken it up a little bit more when we were looking at it.
First one is math.
Math, oh, I'm not, I'm not on math, I'm on reading, okay, let's try a read, either way, math or reading. Here's our data, but what I really want to, you can see it, it's, it is what it is. But I really want to tell you what we're doing with the data, so this is a snapshot of what our kids are doing from fall to winter. But it's not telling you what our kids are doing as third grade winter versus when they're in fourth grade winter. And that's what we need to see, because when you look at our SBA data, third grades here and then we dip. And we can't, like, there's a dip and the standards are um changed, like, it's just a. I don't know, so you kind of have to think of it as like, I just got a um a text message from my lawn people, lawn care people, so it's kind of like. When you're carrying a heavy load in a wheelbarrow, like you're slow and steady, like, and that's what we have to look at, we're needing to look at. Really our third grade data to see when their fourth grade or when our fourth graders are in there and fifth grade, so in our PLCs, we're actually. Our fifth grade PLC, we looked at their third, fourth and fifth grade data, like, how are they moving? That's not showing you this, but that's probably the more data what you, is more beneficial than a snapshot, as Kevin said. So you can see, um yeah, we've gone about fifty percent in both reading and math. Um for I ready, for two or more grade levels behind, we're closing that gap. We're staying the same for reading.
Jody, I think it's important that we we slow down just for a second on the math. And look at the amount of area in red for fall versus the amount of area in red for winter, right? And that's a, that's a big um improvement, much like Kevin said, we're moving that register into the yellow and green side. And that's what we're trying to work on here, is decreasing that that red portion.
And what Kevin was talking about, those kids in yellow, that's some, I mean, all of the kids are important and it's fantastic that we're shrinking that red and growing that green. Those kids in yellow are approaching standard, they're like knocking on the door. Some closer than others, but that's the group, that's a group that can get over that hump before the end of the year.
And that's the one that we are focusing on, you know, we're having our student of the month assembly this Friday. And we're handing out I ready awards, you know, because we want to see the kids that. And those are the kids that you, you want them to see that this is important, because it is only three times, and how many times do we kind of. Blow things off, and so if they can see their growth, they don't have to be in the green, I needed them to grow. I need them to move from red to yellow, I need them to move from yellow to green, and so that's kind of our focus, so.
And I think going back to when I asked the number of students, it shows your number here is on the top, it shows we, the four hundred were tested, right? And we reduced from eighty six students in the red to forty students or forty seven students in red. So I think that's another piece for those who are listening, right, we're, the work that we're doing in the PLCs and the work is worth, yeah.
So. You can see, can you go on to the next one, Blake, for reading? I'll talk about reading, reading, um until it gets up there, um reading, we were.
Blake, can you advance that slide, please?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'm going to continue, um it's at fifty percent again with our reading. And we have decreased it to thirty eight percent, so it's continuing um. And I really actually really want to point out, if you see like the domains, that's, th- those are exciting to see also. Especially when you see the comprehension. The green moving, you know, the amount of red that's decreasing, those are fun to watch. Okay, so I'm going to keep going, is that okay? Does anyone have any questions just on our I ready data? What I didn't point out, um I will answer my own question on this one, what I didn't point out is when I was talking about seeing that same cohort every year. We are seeing the growth, you know, like, we're not losing that, and so that's what we want to see, is like, I need the third graders to not lose that. And so we are seeing that.
Go ahead Blake, one more.
And this is just the early and um E Neil about who's on target, the percentage of who's on target at this point. So it's pretty self explanatory, I do want to point out, like, look at our third grade um dual language. Sixty two percent, so that's super exciting, fifth grade sixty five percent, you know, well done. Okay, so Blake, can you go on to the next one? And this is just kind of our current reality for last year, um overall, school wide. You'll see school wide and then it's broken down into, and you can see the third grade ELA. When they hit fourth grade, it it does dip, it's dip, that's been the trend for years, like years. And so because of the differences in. In um standards. And so for ELA and then math, and math is our fractions, like. That just, that's why it's so exciting this year is that all of our, we've created smart goals for our PLCs. And every single grade level is focusing on is fractions, just by chance, they all picked fractions because fractions is just such a hard concept to. For our students to get, and then the assessment results, it just breaks it down by the different levels. So I think that's all for me.
Mister Denny.
All right, Mister Denny.
Oh, yes, so you started your presentation by talking about how most important is the year over year data. And we look at the heights data, look at river view data, and we look at foot strand, every year foot strand really well. Comparison of review and height. So going to what you said, the year to year data, we talk about community schools, K through five schools, which runs our K through five school. Is that what we're hoping to see with community schools, is that increase, to have that year to year data, to have that consistency in the last transition?
So I think that the, all of those pieces are important, and then the idea that you have those students being staffed by. People in that building for six years, maybe seven if they were TK, and that communication has happened, and the third grade knows what. You know, they got from second grade and so on, there's just not that break. And then you're really, those are your students and you're really focusing and tracking, we lose that transition, all that change that they experience, and so, yeah, I would. I would definitely say that would be important.
I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to, just because this is my school and it's very personal, you know, is our data is good. And I do want, if you look at, if you break it down to grade level data, there are times where our scores do beat which strands. And so I know that overall, we're seeing that and it's not. Um it may not be showing that, but when you look at third grade and third grade, fourth grade and fourth grade, fifth grade and fifth grade, we're about even. So I definitely want, I don't want, I guess that I did that, I just don't want people to think that which strand is. Better than heights, I guess, just because I'm at heights, so that's, I just want to make sure that that's.
And if you look at SBA data, there are areas of heights is definitely higher.
Because I think that's the, that's what stands out, you know, you're having the same curriculum, you're getting the same instruction. The difference is one building to the K through five, and I'm I'm hopeful that when we, we make that transition, that that's what we're going to.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thanks, Jody.
Mister Denny. Go ahead Blake, thank you.
Okay, so following in the, in the pattern that they had um at the elementary. Looking at I ready, um I used a different graphic, um just not to confuse or to um make it ambiguous, but. On the left, I just wanted to highlight um the progress towards annual typical growth. So they um take the baseline assessment in September. And then the system will say, here's based on your score, what we'd expect a typical year's worth of growth to be. Then we also have stretch growth, which if they match their stretch growth for multiple years in a row. It can, that's what catches them up, so a typical growth is staying where you're at and moving a year's worth of growth ahead. Uh stretch growth is really moving more than that year and really, really catching up, so this is the reading growth. Um for this year, and and one thing you'll notice between this slide and the next slide. Is in reading, we have far more students that are in the um the two red groups, less than the yellow. And then the green is pretty good there, um so the annual typical growth. Is a median score, it's not the mean or the average, it's the median, so if we line them up from the highest score. The lowest score, we find that middle ground, that middle score was ninety three percent of the annual expected growth. At the midyear part, part where we would expect to have um fifty percent up at that time. Right, because we majored it in January, it's midyear, so the average or the the median score for us was ninety three percent. So what that means, we've got some students that have two, three, four hundred percent of their annual expected growth. And we have some students that have zero percent of their annual expected growth, but the median score was ninety three percent. And I want to highlight, when we talk about the students that have zero, let's say. Little Michael Denny takes the fall assessment and he's a sixth grader, but he tests at the eighth grade. He takes the January one, tests at the eighth grade again, he's above grade level. So obviously, this wouldn't probably be my example, but he tested above grade level twice, but he didn't grow from that eighth grade to the eighth grade during that time, so he showed no growth. However, he is still two grade levels above, so there are some caveats when we look at the data. That I wanted to 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 bring up now with um with this group, when we're looking at this. Um I want to say that for reading, we had um. In sixth grade, it was a hundred and forty two percent of annual expected growth was the average growth over the time. Seventh grade was a hundred and three and eighth grade was seventy two percent. When we look at that stretch growth, the students that had met stretch growth for the year, which is if they do that year after year, they will catch up. At the midyear point, fifty three percent of our sixth graders had met their stretch growth at the midyear point. That's an end year measurement, but they met it at the midyear, thirty six percent of our seventh grade, twenty four percent of our eighth grade. Now, Deanna kind of brought this up a little bit, there's a difference between our ELA and our math curriculums that we have. ELA has a devoted component that is half of the period that they're in there. Is working in toolkits or small group or workshop model, which is at their level targeted assistance. In math, we don't have those resources, so when we're meeting with math and they're at PLCs, they're looking at their data themselves. Grouping students themselves, finding the intervention themselves and doing that work, they aren't handed a curriculum as we would say our ELA are. They're doing that work and it's very hard work, um but that's the work that they're doing in PLCs, we've talked about PLCs a couple of weeks ago. So Blake, can you go to the next?
Actually, go back, you're a couple.
Back to the one that says math growth.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely, yeah.
So when I look at, I'm looking at the reading uh chart, and I'm assuming that's the I ready assessment data, right? Is that for six and eight, or is it just for six?
For for the one that you see there that has the greens and the yellows and reds?
Yeah.
That's our school.
Just as a whole.
Yeah, yeah, so it doesn't show the numbers like the the elementaries have the numbers, this was percent to percent. So when you look at below, it'll say like the more than three years below went from forty six to thirty nine percent. So we lost that many students to the next level up, which is great, we want to lose as many kids out of that as we can, so. Um so yeah, the comparison isn't line by line, it's the percent below to the percent above, so in its whole school, school wide.
So my, so a question, you know, if you're a, say you're a seventh grader. And you're sitting in that three or more grade levels below. How do you, how do we function as a district to make sure that. We can continue to engage those students that they don't lose hope as they get so close to high school when. You don't think to just snowball in the wrong direction, how how do we manage that?
That that's a great question, um when you talk to our staff and, and I don't want to put Ms. Huntington on the spot, but those are the questions that we ask. When you're that far behind, so one of the ways that we do that, and and we talked about percentage of annual expected growth. If I'm at the second grade level, but I can see that I have two hundred percent of my annual expected growth. I'm still in the red, I'm still in the striped red area, but I'm showing growth, and so we we talk about writing goals for our students. They write goals, uh we try to give them feedback on an ongoing basis. These, the the hard part that you see here, these are, as uh Mister Gilman had said, um done three times throughout the year, so. Not as much, it's the feedback that we get day to day and the um the work that the teachers are doing, so. Part of teacher clarity that we're working on is relevance. How is this relevant to you? And so they have to make a connection with those students on a day to day, so. Um you know, uh Jessica may be working on Pythagorean theorem. Well, what does Pythagorean theorem mean to me? When would I ever use that? And so her ability to connect with students. Show them how it's relevant, show them how they're going to use it in their everyday life, because that's what you hear, is how, when am I ever going to use this again, right? So that's part of the the hard work that they have to do, is each lesson, we're asking them to create connections through relevance to your kids. And so it's a combination of of feedback through this, and we try to reward it, we give popcorn out, we have celebrations. But then it's the day to day, week to week stuff on top of that, and and it's the hard work of these teachers that are saying, and listen, I believe in you and and and. And I've seen it in in her class and in other classes as well, those kids that are, for lack of a better, will say. When you ask them, what what do you see for yourself? And and it's a great example, and we've got some some pictures of it on the wall, and I think I've shared this before. There are students that will say, I don't, I don't even know that I'll survive past graduation, the like the harsh reality of that. And Jessica and Crystal and Jody and Michelle and all those teachers pulled together, and that kid graduated. And so it, that's stuff that you don't see in the scores here, but it's those connections, and that's where. Um and I don't want to to put it above and beyond, but they bust their butts every day to make those connections with those kids. To keep them engaged, keep them believing that there's something more, because some of our kids for six, seven, eight. Years have have struggled, have been told, you're not, you're not meeting standard, you're not doing well, SBA, every year, there's a color chart. You get that color chart and it's full of red, that is just one piece after another, after another, that is negative feedback, so they're working on turning that tide. Every day through connections, through meeting them at the door, um through feedback, through the grades, I mean, it's a, it's. A ton of work um that you don't see in these scores here that they do every day to keep them connected. Keep them, you know, working, putting that carrot in front of them and and keep that that hope alive.
Are you using, is I middle school using ARC now?
Yes.
Yep, so we're in our, in our second year of.
So I guess I have another question, this I ready test, how many questions is it each time they take, a student takes it?
I don't know that we're supposed to know that, but I'm going to turn and. Mrs. Huntington, how many questions would you say are on I ready for kids in your class if you were to give a number? And not that we're supposed to look or know anything about it, but.
Is it a hundred?
It's just, it's a small.
No, 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 it's not that many.
Fifty?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So it's not an inundative test that kids get tired of? Okay.
But it's not, it's not a, an exhaustive two hundred question, sit down for three days. Sometimes kids are done that day, within that class period, they're done with the, now, some of them. Like maybe little Michael Denny was in, he was school, was C, 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 enter and I'm done, um some do take longer, but um. It's it's two to three days for math and two to three days for ELA when we give it.
But not all, they're not doing it all day.
No, it's throughout their period, yeah, two to three, two to three class periods for for each usually, sometimes more.
Thank you.
Question for you, Mike, um so in in these worst case scenarios. Is there, how much interaction is with? Ends up going back to that student and say, parents and saying. Hey, little Michael Denny's two grades behind. And. The the this kind of stems from, I mean, we've got teachers in the building from eight o'clock to three o'clock. So these worst case scenarios, I mean. We're asking these teachers. That that that's dang near impossible. So like, i- i- is there interaction with the students, parents? And saying, hey, here's where we at, we we need help.
There there are, as you know, there's there's components that are set up through the course of the year. We have student led conferences twice a year. But that is the importance and 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 they listen to me harp on it every year about keeping grades up to date, keeping them fresh. If they've taken a retest, get that in there. So that parents are able to look at that tool and see how their student is doing. We use Parent Square and as the.
I guess I'm more like talking intervention. If your students.
Yeah.
Two, two grade levels behind is eight grader and. That's.
Yeah.
I I guess my question, if anything, there are more intervention with parents saying, hey, this is not it. Rather than I I evolve into the conference halls.
Mm-hmm, right. Yeah.
But updating online, that's.
Yeah, and and one of the things that I'll say is the struggle is when when we have. The core class instruction and the work they're doing there. And we don't have the opportunity to call and say, hey, we've got an after school program for you. Hey, we've got a a couple of intervention teachers on staff that can work with your kid. We don't have that. So now it's down to that classroom teacher is the beginning and the end, the alpha and the mega, or what they do for that year. And and that's the where the the communication comes in. And we see it, we see the the phone calls home, we see them come in and meet, we have. Student success team meetings on a regular basis where you come in, you meet with all the teachers, maybe you meet with a couple of teachers. So there is a, as there is outreach to parents. You know, is it, is it as much as we would like with time, time allowing, probably, probably not. But there are components in place with teachers taking that responsibility. And then we've talked about MTSS, that system of. SST student success teams. And then, of course, we've got your IEP and your, you know, your MDT teams as well. We're meeting with parents throughout the week, throughout, you know, every day we're having multiple parent meetings in there. So is it a systematic? That we would say when you hit a certain component that you're going to get a phone call? And here's the list of things, maybe not, but it's it's an ongoing process.
We're working on it, we'll talk about panorama in another.
Panorama is exciting.
It will help us with that.
And that will help significantly with that, yeah, so.
What slide do you want to be on?
Uh, are we, we haven't talked about math, but let's jump to math real quick.
I think you're on there, Blake. I think you were on there.
You might have already jumped ahead on that one, so I appreciate that. So math, we talked about the median score and that is fifty-four percent. You can see the growth in the students. Math. Has less students in the in the red and the double red or the, you know, the three or more behind, they have more in the yellow. And so the the push is, is we've said is to move everybody up. But there's less students in that in that triple red area. So that is good, but when we look at their scores as well, we've got. Thirty-five percent of the students of all the students at the middle school have met their annual expected growth in January. There's fewer that have met the stretch growth. But again, as as we've said, we're we're asking those teachers to. Be curriculum developers and to be interventionist. And they're taking that on. That wasn't always the role that we had in the time that we had available for them. And so with the blocks this year, we've we've opened up more time for them to do that work. And so we're seeing the the growth from that. There are less students in that lower red area compared to ELA. And they're working on that growth. And the typical growth is where we'd want to see it at this time, given the the assessment that they have. But we are seeing there's twenty-five percent of the kids that have met their annual stretch growth already. And so there are a lot of students that are are really cranking that up and and really working hard and the teachers are really pushing them hard to to get through that. The next two are are kind of snapshots of of the same information that you've seen, it's just specific to the middle school. So the report card fifty-seven, fifty and fifty-six in ELA math and science are that foundational grade level knowledge and skills. You can see the growth percentages, higher growth of our students over time. And that's at all levels, level one, two, three and four on the SBA than in ELA. They were at forty-two for ELA and fifty for math. So you can see the work that math has been doing is showing up in the. In the annual measurement of SBA that we have there. So. And then the next page, the last one that we have in there is just what everybody else has had of where do our kids land in the different. Subclasses, subgroups, and the the part that that needs to be maybe restated. And and sometimes I forget about this, but we probably have kids that fall into six or seven of those groups at a time. They might be highly capable, but they might also be on an IEP with a disability. They might be low income and they might be migrant students. And so. We're we're working on that student level in our PLCs to develop their skills, build them up because we know that. That they fall into multiple areas. And and so we've got our our two areas are English language learners. And our students with disabilities are the areas where we've been identified as underperforming as a school. And so those are really the areas we're hitting hard in our. In our work in the classes and our PLCs.
One statistic on the section five oh four kids.
Uh huh.
You had tremendous growth with math, and I think you think that's attributed to those kids are. In an IEP or in a five oh four plan and they're getting more intervention than more help and then you're.
Yeah, so so the the students on an IEP are receiving specialty design instruction in either the general classroom with support from the special ed teacher. Or they're in a resource room model or in life skills model. Five oh four students are typically in the general education class with accommodations. And so I might be a student with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. So. For years, I may have struggled with that, maybe I haven't been identified, we get the identification. And now I'm able to sit on a squishy chair, frequent breaks, take testing in a different location. And so as our teachers get to know those students better, we're able to provide those accommodations. And and it helps when heights and waist transenders up, we just continue where they're at. So those are some of those students that you'll typically see in the yellow. Especially the five oh four student that might have a five oh four plan, they're they're not. Underperforming where they've been struggling and struggling and struggling for multiple years, they're in that yellow range, they just need a little bit of something different. Maybe it's a a classroom accommodation, maybe it's a different way of having a blue overlay for their reading instead of a white page or whatever. And those are are quick wins and you can see that in the in the growth there, so.
Mister Bailey.
Thanks, Mike.
Go ahead to the next one, Blake.
You can see my data looks a little different. The top left corner is similar to what you've seen from other other schools. But these ones are taken from Tableau Reader on OSPI on the EDS website. So a couple of things I want to point out before I really get going on this. Number one, I love looking at the the iReady data that they presented. High school doesn't offer iReady. We do offer that to our special education students. We found that the platform still works for them. But the majority of our general ed students do not find the platform of iReady. Have not found the platform conducive to their own testing needs, if you will. As a former middle school teacher granted in the state of Wyoming. I gave the iReady test and it is tailored specifically to lower, to elementary, to lower middle school. And so when I got here and we still gave the the iReady test, it was a problem because we're not seeing. We're not seeing accurate information coming from that test. And we stopped giving the iReady years ago. So I don't even know how how many years it's been. We did recently just have, within the last week, have a discussion, they have updated their platform. We are going to take a look at it because I do like seeing that. The color coded system, it is, it is nice to look at, it is very read, it is user friendly to look at the data that's provided. It is accurate. And so we want to take a look at that again and and see if that's a possibility for the high school. As we adopted curriculum, we wanted to bring something in to our ELA department. That had a diagnostic, we chose Savis, we're the only school in the district that does not use ARC. For similar reasons, our teachers felt that the the curriculum itself of Savis matched the level of our students a little bit more. And again, we, at the high school level, kids are a little bit, well, maybe they're not more vocal, they're vocal in a different way. We, I hear a lot about kids being offended. By when we tried to duck down to them or we tried to, why am I taking this test? This is a kid's test. Why am I taking character strong curriculum? I've had this for eight years. Why am I doing this? I've had. So we play that game a lot and trying to find the right fit for our kids. The data that I have present presented to you guys is SBA data. There are three charts that I put on the board. The top right is our graduation chart. Now. It looks a little bit different, so I'm going to try to explain it to you guys. Deanna actually mentioned earlier, there's an overall score when you're looking at the report card. And so Prosser High School might be not as high as we want Prosser High School. We might be more in the middle on the overall score, but when you break it down and look at what what these actually mean, you'll see. You'll see where we sit, where we stand. And I might even just grab this and walk over to the board so I can, so I can. So when we look at this data. The further to the right that you get. You're looking at higher percentages. So we just talked about our graduation rate being ninety ninety-first percentile. Well, according to this chart right here, it says we're within the eighty-four point five to eighty-nine point two range. Okay, so already this data is just a little bit off, for whatever reason, I don't know, because really it comes from the state. So I'm not quite sure what that is, but then you'll notice the color coded system here. So the darker green that you have is the higher socioeconomic status of the families of the kids that are that are testing. So it goes from green shades down into yellow into orange and then into red. Okay, so the darker your red color, the lower the socioeconomic status. Now, I only bring that up because I think it's important to recognize what we're we're trying to to look at apples and apples here, we're trying to look at oranges and oranges. And I don't want it to seem like a justification, so I'll come back to that in just a minute. But I think it is important when we're talking about overall perceptions to make sure that we're looking at things the correct way. We're looking at this, really, we're trying to find the other oranges here in this case, because those are the similar demographics. Socioeconomic demographics to our students. So we're sitting right here, this graduation rate, we're continually trying to bring that up, we would like it to be higher, we will continue to try to make that higher. But now when you get into this aspect of it. You know, when you look at our overall report card. People weigh in on that and our report card doesn't look great, but when you break this down, two thousand twenty-three ELA proficiency for all students. There are a couple of things that you notice. So I'm going to go here, this is us, the highlighted one is us. Fifty-four point two to fifty-eight point seven percent, that's this entire band here. Okay, so we're within the fifty fifty-six percent range. Okay, now, if we want to compare that, we'd look to the right and say, man, let's look at these other schools. You don't see many oranges over here. You see a lot more yellows and greens over this way, okay? There are a couple. So as I look at this, I say, man, okay, let's take a look at this data and we'll try to evaluate this data. There's two right there, those are the two schools that I am, that I look at, because those are the most closely related to us. That socioeconomic status, those are the schools that I'm going to look at and say, man, what did, what are they doing? To get their students at, and this is the other thing I want to talk about, to get their students at sixty-eight percent. Okay? And then we go to math proficiency. Now, this little thing right here is throwing me off just a bit. But you can see, somebody will have to help me with the percentages.
Point six to twenty-six point four.
Twenty-one point six? The twenty-six point four. Okay, so we look at that and I, probably everybody in this room is going, what in the heck? A twenty-six percent proficient? What's the furthest right? What's the one at the top of this scale?
Forty-five point eight.
Forty-five percent. So the best we have, now, this isn't the entire state, this is our valley, this is the valley. The very best we have in the entire valley is forty-five percent proficient. That's our highest socioeconomic status. And it's producing our highest proficient level of student. I don't see any oranges in this part when we're talking math. So when really we're looking at our math scores, man, that doesn't feel good, doesn't feel good to be twenty-six percent. But it feels good to be the top of our socioeconomic status. It it does, it feels good for for the socioeconomic status that we have and we're performing better than the rest of those oranges. That feels pretty good to me. But is that good enough? No, that's not good. We're continually trying to find ways and we talked about that, or some of my colleagues talked about that earlier. Finding the, and I refer to it as the tip of the spear, we want to find the tip of the spear there. With those entry points, what are those? And if you can go to the next slide, Blake. You've actually seen this data in the last board meeting, but I did something a little different here because this is, this is what our English teachers are looking at. So this is Savis data that our teachers do and it's it's similar to iReady, we give it three times a year. This diagnostic to see where kids are, we can put it into charts. Now, the difference between Savis and and ARC is the the tables. They're not as easy to look at in in this, and that may be user error as we're trying to learn this curriculum. So we're trying to get better at it, but we put this together. Now, I look at this and I say, okay, well, it's giving us a lot of data to look at based on the actual individual. Component standard, okay? Each each individual standard, reading for information, reading informational text, reading literature, language. There's every single standard here, minute, you can see the number of students that are getting those questions right versus wrong. And so what we then try to do is determine, okay. Based on our aspect, let's correlate the SBA data with this data and try to correlate with our also cross reference our priority standards. So we're choosing. Which standards we feel are most important for our kids to get. And that's where we're putting our time. Now, hopefully. Those standards, and that's what we're looking at when we put it into something like this, is hopefully something like this is a priority standard. Or this one is a priority standard, because if this is a priority standard. That's my entry point, that's the tip of the spear, that's the question that now I'm going to lean on and we are going to lean on. As teachers and administrators, as the entry point to try and reach that kid and. And see more growth there, because we're going to, we're going to modify our instruction, we're going to stop, slow things down, put kids into groups. Use our teaching strategies that that we find effective to try and focus on the needs of that student, those students that are falling into that question. Does that make sense?
Questions for Brian?
So do we know, we look, talk about the math and socioeconomic status.
Yes.
But is that school district doing something or not? Are they having after school tutoring or?
And that's, those are the questions that we're asking ourselves right now. And then if it's a, it's within the valley, so it is a close enough school district, so then we're reaching out to them. I don't know specifically. But we will, we will know specifics. We feel like I'm I'm just going to piggyback off what Michael said and the others have talked about MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, those are huge, we focused on that. Decided that as a focus for our district and trying to provide ways to reach kids within the school day. And and we're building on those, we're identifying those and I think everybody in this room is on that committee, at least the all the administrators are on that committee. To try and identify what those next steps will be specifically for that. And. You know, part of that is identifying what those what those need to be and Kevin Gilman is leading that work. But identifying what those needs are and then we'll we'll reach out and and see what other schools are doing. We have adopted some things, freshman success, Deanna referenced. You know, David Funk has done a great job with that. We have Megan Vandegrift doing her internship with us right now for administration and she's helping with that as well. But we brought in some concepts that that some of our teachers picked up from Conell High School. And has been very effective in trying to reach our students during Mustang period, so we're trying that, trying that on now and hopefully going to be able to. To push that out to all of our grades instead of just freshmen, so. Just a couple of things.
Thanks, Mike.
Do the next slide, Blake. And this one, I'm, all the principals talked about this, so we're going to skip over this one. This is, this is important because, and I I know it's small, so it's going to be hard to read, but what this report shows is. In two thousand twenty-two, at the top, those were our kindergartners. Those same kids now in this year down here in February twenty twenty-five. What I want you to notice, and this is the power of a really strong curriculum and it has robust data. And that's the challenge we're experiencing with math, we just don't have a curriculum that does this for us. When we, when our second graders started in kindergarten, eighty-three of them were at emergency. Right now, in that same grade, we have thirty-one. We had twenty-one kids that were proficient and now we have seventy-nine. So those are apples to apples. Now, there is some cohort, there are some kids that have come and gone within those groups. So those are apples to apples. Now, there is some cohort, there are some kids that have come and gone within those groups. Our first graders, it's the same story, our first graders three years ago, hundred and twenty kids were in red. Now, that number's forty-eight. So there is growth happening, go to the next one, please, Blake. This is the same thing for our third graders, you can see we went from ninety-nine, ninety-nine in the red now to eighty-five in the green when there was only thirteen three years ago. And the same thing, here's our fourth graders, our fourth graders, um, you can see the growth there as well. So those are the kind of reports and the information we can get out of ARC, and it is giving us that individual student information on a very current basis. Go to the next one, these are our dual language kids. And this is, um, our kids all across, you know, across the board, it's much smaller numbers, because we have just one class per grade at each of the schools. But if you look at, for instance, the second graders, uh, this is just this year's growth. We started out, um, and like, for instance, in our, our kinders, they don't have, they don't get emergency because they can't be that far behind. Um, but you can see the growth already of kids just in those, you know, four months or five months. This report was from October first, you can see as the color moves to the right, we still have kids in red, we still have kids in yellow, we still have kids in green, but they, that's a one year's growth picture or five months. And then the overtime for our dual language kids, our kindergarteners in twenty twenty-two, if you look down here at second graders in twenty twenty-five, we had twenty-nine kids in red in kindergarten and ten in yellow. And right now, in those second graders, we have thirteen kids in red and twenty of them are in green, and there weren't any greens when they went kindergarten. So take some time just to look at it, it, there, there is a lot of data that you can look at, and we'll talk a little bit more about individual student data when we talk about panorama. But here we are, our celebrations and our next steps, that next slide, Blake, our students are growing. They are growing, are they always growing at the pace we want them to, to catch up? Blake, can you move forward, please? Sometimes yes, and sometimes we need more, we need more, there's more that we can do. Reading is showing the most growth overall. Our schools are using data to make instructional improvements. Um, our next steps is we have to focus on math professional development and program change. Um, we have to continue to strengthen the core in all of our contents and do, our question is, and I'll talk about this actually in my report, for reading, do we need to continue, do I ready reading? We have really robust data in ARC, do we need to continue that? So that's a discussion that's happening as well. And that's it.
Questions for Deanna?
On, on the math curriculum, I mean, it sounds like we're obviously in need of doing something there. I know, uh, Principal Denny said that they're working on science curriculum currently, I mean, is there anything in the pipeline that we're?
So, um, so it, on our schedule, because we do kinda break things, some of our smaller contents, like the arts and stuff, we did K, equate K-12 adoption. But, uh, elementary math is on the schedule for next year and secondary math would be the year after. It's pretty expensive and hard to do a K-12 math adoption, big content like that, it's, it's expensive. So yes, that's coming, but it isn't always just about curriculum, it's also about us and, you know, our level, uh, our professional development, things that we have to do. But, you know, like Jessica's here, she's a math teacher, they don't have a curriculum that has built-in intervention in it, ARC does. They don't have a curriculum that has the date, kinda data that we can get to track students, because you saw big picture data, but the reality is we have to look at every single kid and what they can do and know. Every day, that's what teachers are doing, we're looking at big chunk data, but you're looking at the kid. That's the way to get growth is to know each and every kid.
Great, thank you, that was, uh, very informative, so I appreciate the update. Thank you for everybody that, all the principals that came in and talked, I appreciate that. All right, moving on to our action items, first up is a Prosser High School mariachi club.
The green? My name is Matt Greel, I'm the ASB advisor at the high school. Um, a student approached me about creating a mariachi club, so I gave her the step-by-steps, what she needed to do. So the last step is getting your approval. Uh, they have been meeting and rehearsing, uh, with your approval, they would be able to raise money and buy the interest, specific instrument, instruments they need. If any questions about the club, I would defer to Mr. Norris here, who is helping advise.
So I'm Dan Norris, I'm the band teacher, and I've been working with Josh Madison, who's gonna be the official advisor um, for the group, and we've had the eight meetings so far, I think, with the students. Uh, we actually had started talking about the possibility of class, and two days later, these students came to us and said, we wanna start a mariachi club, how do we do that? And I've been going to a lot of sessions at conferences about starting them up, and so we said, let's go for it, and we're trying it, we've had, I think, about twenty students at most, and so some of them are here right now with us, we did get a donation from Prosser Music Boosters to buy two of the instruments that we need already, so that's, they're gonna be buying those directly from Ted Brown Music as soon as we get this approved. And, yeah, we're gonna, they're gonna play one song tomorrow night at the fine arts night, so.
What other instruments are needed?
Um, so the bass instruments that they use are standard guitar, which we have plenty of those. And then there's a, it's a small guitar called a vihuela, it's a five-string guitar that's kind of a higher pitch, a guitarone, it's a very big guitar with kind of a expanded back, that's the bass voice. And then eventually we'd wanna add in violins, right now, we've actually got a flute player playing a violin part, a saxophone player playing a violin part, and then trumpets, which we already have, so.
Aren't they rehearsing?
Uh, after school, yes, they've been doing Mondays and Fridays after school, I think they might be moving to lunchtime meetings to accommodate sports. Everything else is we go into spring.
I just wanna applaud the students for organizing this, making a great, great job on.
Any other questions? Well, I moved to approve the Prosser High School mariachi club.
Oh, second.
Been moved in second in. All good, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those, same sign, motion carries. Congratulations, thank you, looking forward to tomorrow night. Uh, next up is out-of-state travel for, uh, girls and boys basketball to Florida. Good, how are you? Thanks for waiting, being patient.
Is it green?
There we go. Uh, so last year, we talked to you guys about going to, uh, Phoenix, Arizona, where we went this year with our boys and girls basketball teams, and uh, Toby and I and the other coaches and players have been kinda throwing some ideas around about going to Orlando, Florida next year with our boys and girls basketball team again. And you guys have been talking a lot about data tonight, so if you wanna look at the data from our trip this year, we enjoyed it, we had a good time, there was no issues, we raised all the money for it and then some. And so it would be a great experience for our kids again to get to go somewhere new. And, uh, we wanna keep it with both, both programs, because that was a really special experience for our players and coaches and all the families that got to join us. And if you have questions about it, I think all the information is in the packet, but we'd be willing to answer those for you.
Questions?
I don't know if you know your exact dates for going, do you anticipate missing any regular games or having that?
It would be similar to this year, uh, the tournament runs from December twenty-eighth to January first, and so they wouldn't miss any school as it would be during winter break, and then it is a part of our regular season, so we're only allotted twenty games plus a foundation game, which is twenty-one total. And those games would account for some of our non-league games, so we wouldn't miss anything for our preseason.
It's the main fundraising for basketball, your tournament?
Uh, yes, the summer tournament and also the kids camp that we start organizing and the, uh, banner sponsors.
I think you guys do a really good job as coaches with your messaging and the fundraising. I had a community member, and you can't control it, so I guess it's a matter of just making sure, you know, the messaging is clear, I had a community member, they, why, why, um, aren't sports funded? Why do they have to fund raising? And I'm like, sports, sports are funded, what's going on? Well, everybody's fundraising, they pay for their sports, I'm like, no, they're, that's for extra, or, you know, exit, you know, love the uniforms, but there's a rotation for that, I would just say. Sure you're messaging them, I wish you guys.
Any other questions? I moved to approve out-of-state travel for girls and boys basketball.
I'd second it.
Been moved in second in. Yoshimi, I'm standing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you and good luck this Friday. Uh, next up is out-of-state travel for DECA to International Career Development Conference in Florida. Please go to Florida.
I might get out of the cold.
Is it in December, January too?
Would you mind pulling your microphone just so people online can?
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, another great opportunity, good job.
I'd make a motion to approve the DECA to the International Career Development Conference.
Oh, second.
It's been moved in second in, uh, to approve the out-of-state travel for DECA to International Career Development Conference. Students? She, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those same sign, motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you and good luck, yeah, that's exciting. Uh, next up is, uh, uh, Panorama Contract, Deanna and Kevin. Oh, whoops, sorry. Got a little handsy with my crossbow. Uh, out-of-state travel for PLCs at work, Housen Middle School and Prosser Heights Elementary. Just keep you here a little longer.
I don't know if Jody's gonna come up, but, um, so this is part of our, uh, school improvement plan. You've, um, heard a presentation on it already this year on professional learning communities. Um, as a district, we are investing in this, and one of the things that we, um, that I've, my experience is that we take on a new, um, program or a new idea. We get the initial awareness training of it, we try to implement it, and it falls somewhere between on its face and successful. Um, we believe in this so much that we believe that all the staff should have the training on it level, or at the national level where we get the professional training. Limited onsite trainings, the majority of this training is in-person at their summer institutes. So what we're asking for is permission for out-of-state travel uh, to be able to travel to PLCs at work, we would take a team. Jody's in a little different situation than we are, um, but we would like to continue that process of taking, um, a team to get trained. We are using OSSI, Office of School and Support, uh, Systems Improvement. Um, that is our money, the grant that we get every year, um, from the state. That is what we use to implement what we have in our school improvement plan, so that we can support that through professional development or training or materials or whatever the case is, so, um, this is consistent with our plan that we've had. Um, in our plan, we're gonna meet tomorrow with Chris Clem, she is our state coach, and she's outlined it as a three-to-five-year process. Um, and so this is just continuing that work that we've been doing of training, uh, staff, giving them the professional development so that we have, um, success with the program, but then we have sustainability. Um, if we only train a couple and they retire, move, resign, move to a different building, we lose all that capacity, so we're asking to be able to send another cohort to, um, to a summer institute from PLCs at work and receive the training in that area.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Michael.
So for those who are listening, this is program money specifically divine designed for this development.
No general funds, no, it's, it's all from the state grant that we receive.
I just like to always say that real loud so that it gets in the, on the record.
I agree, yep.
Me either. Oh, go ahead.
It's a situation, if we don't use that money, we do lose that money, so this isn't the only thing we use it for, but this is one of our big pieces.
Thank you, any questions for Michael or Jody? I'll move to approve out-of-state travel for PLCs at work for HMS and Heights.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second in. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you're, um.
All right, you could jump ahead to me, it would be fine. Um, uh, the, the panorama, I've talked about it a few times at the board meeting, this is a system, a, a multi-tiered system of support, MTSS platform that will help us track and monitor students very specifically, and the communication will then be able to go from building to building. I was talking to a group of reading interventionists last week, and we were talking about how they're doing reader intervention, they're tracking their data, but they're doing it on a piece of paper in their cla, in their room in kindergarten for second grade, and that data, we don't have a system that's collecting that data, so that when they move on to third grade or fourth grade or go to the middle school, that we can all see, like anybody that needs to see that information about that student. This platform, um, is very powerful, it does probably even more than we even know. Kevin and I have spent quite a bit of time, as well as the MTSS, um, all the principals are part of the MT, district MTSS team. We're really excited about it, we think it's really gonna take us to the next step and be able to individualize and track our students in their success, and when they're experiencing challenges so that we can support them. The funding for this, uh, it's about ten thousand dollars for the initial implementation, set up all the data integration, all those pieces. And about, it's about forty-seven thousand dollars for the remainder of the contract, it will be funded out of lab, and it is, it's, it's something at this point that I, we feel like is, is, we're like so impressed by it, we're really excited, and then we also feel like we're going to be able to let go of some other things we're doing that cost us some other funds. Um, because it'll do those things for us.
Um, is this, is this similar to, I'll probably get away off, is this similar to another system we have within the district? So this wouldn't be like a, a replacement for Skyward or?
No, it will integrate the data from Skyward, right now, if we have a student, um, who, uh, maybe has been really good all along for attendance and then has started to drop off, missed a lot of school, maybe he's getting into trouble. Well, if I'm the tenant secretary, I might know that they're missing some days. If I'm the principal or a teacher, I might know they're getting into trouble. If I am, um, uh, their coach, I might know, like, we, there's all these different systems, but we don't talk, they don't talk to each other, we don't, we would maybe necessarily know the student is struggling. And, uh, this is a way where buildings are able to monitor their kids as well as put data in to help track. Um, the system. Um, the system actually ta- can take student data and write IEP goals based on the academic performance of the student. So it, it really does a lot. I can't even describe it all. I mean, I tried to describe it in here. Kevin could probably add to it as well. Um, but if we want our, if we want to be able to, to implement, the state is expecting us to MTSS platform and it is tiered sys- tiered supports. And it's the right thing to do. It's not just because they're telling us to do it. This is the way that we would be able to collect and monitor that data to help support our students.
So just looking at all the ARC data that is available every single day. This ARC feeds into it, I ready feeds into it. I'm not having to go to ARC and look at it. I'm not having to go to I ready. If I pull up a kid, the attendance will be attached to them, ARC will be attached to them. If they are in interventions, what the interventions teacher's doing will be attached to that student. At the, the attendance, we have to go into Skyward. The reports are not the easiest to run. Through, everything will be right there if I pull up a student.
Uh, there, so it also will do cell screeners three times a year with, with kids. So they're social emotional for kids that are having, you know, some challenges. Um, that's all integrated as part of this as well. So there's the four buckets, the behavior attendance, academics and social emotional learning. And it'll be like a one stop shop. We can go in and filter for kids to find out who might be having challenges. We get to set our thresholds for like attendance. What do we consider a green, just like we see green, red and yellow and red up there? We'll be able to do that same thing for attendance. We'll be able to do that same thing for kids who might be struggling in the area with their social emotional. Um, any having social emotional challenges. So we're, we're pretty excited about it. Our counselors are really excited. The principal, everybody. Pre K twelve, yeah.
Say that ARC and I ready all work together with it. Is there anybody that has to put these pieces together for it all to work together?
So, so the data integration is part of that initial setup, but it is a system that will feed from our systems. So they can talk to each other. Some systems don't talk to each other. We have to put the data in and put the data in and put the data in to see it. The, the systems will talk to each other. And so that it'll be on time in the moment data.
So it's real time. Um, there are some back end pieces that start in that first part, but once they're talking, unless we have a, a problem, they will continually talk. A lot of times are real time and sometimes they do do middle of the night updates like at 2:00 AM for the data for the next day. Some of it's real time and some of it's like once.
Part of the reason why we're bringing it now is so that we can use the data from this year. Uh, the data, data integration starts this year. This way we can have this year's data going in and next year's. If we wait late until later, we'll just get next year's data.
So this wouldn't be, I, I'm just thinking of like Skyward and having students years ago, like waiting for this stuff to be updated. So thi- this isn't that case. Like you're not waiting on someone to put. Once it's up and going.
Now, we might be entering, so for instance, our reading interventionists are going to three times a year enter, a minimum of three times a year, enter their students' progress through their Orton Gillingham curriculum and how they're progressing through that. So there is data entry that will have to happen and for certain, you know, circumstances, yeah. But, but that would be hand entered, but that's like something we're asking them to do. Or if a counselor has pulled a group from the cell survey that says these kids are all struggling with friend relationships and I'm gonna do a group on, with friend relationships on these kids, they'll be able to enter data to show what they've done and so that we can see if that worked.
And pull the intervention that's in there.
It has interba- yeah, has intervention curriculum.
This is the intervention I use with this group or this individual. So you wanna, do you wanna talk quickly about your, um, where you talked about if a student at the high school was meeting with?
Oh, so I was, I was meeting with our social worker and, and a student came by and we, and I said to her, um, she goes, oh, that student comes by a lot. And I said, well, how, how do you know you're the only one like meeting with a student? So a lot of things when you're working with students with their, their mental health and you're giving them tools and tricks, like we do release of informations because if we have someone working with the council offsite, we wanna use the same language. We wanna make sure they're telling the kid the same thing and that we're supporting them. So she goes, well, I did see that student with Genesis the other day. So who was Genesis was here today. And I said, so is the kid like to get out of class, going to Genesis and then going to you? And then maybe their counselor and Simon by the principal's office. So, but nobody knows that's happening because there's, that's not a form. We have no tracking of that. And then is it something they really need? Then it probably should be one person. Who's the one person that's responsible? And so some of that is counselors, like they have to know, like this is my student, they're on my caseload. Doesn't mean they can't ever talk to anybody else, but sometimes some of that happens to, to. And it's probably not very effective and it also is, they're not in class when they're doing that. So is that necessary? So.
And I, I think it was, was it Jason that sent the article out? Uh, that we read about doing, uh, uh, individual student plans.
Yeah.
This would really contribute to that because you get all the data points from all over then to really come in and create a plan just for that student.
Yep.
Have a couple of questions. Uh, it looks like it's a three year process. Um, at least based on the year one is you build the foundation. Um, then it just kinda goes.
Right.
From there. Um, it, is it fifty, would it be fifty seven or fifty thousand dollars a year every year or is that?
So the fifty seven, so that really right now it's forty seven. If we did extend a contract, it would be, could be a little bit less, but it's not really significant.
So we don't have to buy an annual membership for that?
This is a, you're buying a one year membership basically. We're buying, and this one year is next year's actually. But they're gonna do all the front end work and all the data integration for, it'll be forty seven thousand dollars because we don't pay the ten thousand again.
So if we wanted to keep the, if we're gonna keep this long term.
Yep.
Um, it'd be about forty seven thousand.
Yeah.
Is lap funding, um, stable enough to support that?
Lap funding is, yes. Yes.
So this will cover?
Well, I guess I should ta- say anything that has to do with funding right now. The grain is like, with the caveat that yes, it's been very stable for all the years I've been here. Um, I, but I obviously can't a hundred percent guarantee anything at this point. Yeah, it's year to year. It's a sta- it's stay funding.
And so this will cover beginning now, twenty twenty five through.
Right. So they're gonna do all the data integration and prepare for all the training. You have, everything will be there and set so we can capture this year's data. And we're gonna do the training in, um, the stage one training basically with a core group. Because they don't want you to start with your entire district because it doesn't usually work. It's too much. It's too big of a system. So we'll start with the core group in August and then we'll layer in as we go through to train others for the, and to use the system.
The other question.
Uh, how many other school districts are doing this?
There's a lot of other school districts that have it. I can't tell you off the top of my head whom. Um, but they're a, uh, national company. They, the guy, the gentleman we work with is on the east coast, but they have many districts. I can get you some, a few names of some if you'd like.
Would this, um, be a good tool for transfer students thing, you know?
So transfer students coming in, we aren't necessarily gonna have information on. Um, but it would allow you to group, to have a group of new students coming in to be able to monitor those just to see how things are going for them. So you can create custom groups. So you could have a custom group of new students so that you're checking in on those kids, monitoring their sa- social emotional.
But if their previous school had this already on hand.
I don't, that I don't know. That I don't know. But I can, that's a question I can ask.
I like when you talked about even the IEP, the five or four language, would you link to, had a conference? And I'm thinking like middle school, high school, we have multiple teachers. And I just thought, well, I didn't, I didn't know they had an IEP. Maybe not everybody can be coordinated for that meeting and then they can, you know, they have that access to it. Be like, no, that's, that's in the IEP. So that would allow for that.
Um, so it has IEP component. We're actually, Nikki and I are going to meet with him to find more out more. It has so many pieces. We didn't have anybody specialized with us in the first three presentations we've done, but it has a whole IEP component, can wr- actually write IEPs. Um, you can, and all of the monitoring. So it is a state law to monitor progress monitoring for special education. So it will provide that and it'll, we can also then establish the expectation of how every teacher is doing the progress monitoring in our district to make sure we're compliant.
We can even create custom forms to put in there if we want to, uh, for an example, like, um, a referral process. Where everybody, we kinda have that now, but it would be on there all the, you could do your whole referral process, SST and everything right in that.
It's all in a binder in buildings right now.
So even, even if a student say we had an SST process, this is what we did. Even if they didn't qualify, the middle school still would be able to see that later and go, oh, wow. Which strand had an SST referral here. They didn't qualify, but they would at least see that the process was initiated.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Deanna and Kevin? I move to approve panorama contract. That's been moved and seconded to approve the panorama contract. Alexander. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next up is RFQ zero zero one dash twenty five, professional real estate services.
So we are getting ready to do a request, um, for qualifications to hire real estate or a Realtor for our properties. Other than that, it's pretty much self-explanatory there. Um, the RFQ specifically calls out to make sure that they have the proper licensure and so forth and ask for their fees and so on and so forth. Um, and this is the first step that then kind of goes hand in hand with our capital prod, uh, facilities, um, committee and so forth. So all, this is just tying that up now that we're here and settled and um, Boys and Girls Club are out of the white church and some different pieces like that.
Any questions for Kim?
I'd make a motion to approve the RFQ zero zero one dash twenty five, professional real estate services.
Been moved and seconded to approve RFQ zero zero one dash twenty five, professional real estate services. Students. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next up is vouchers. Do you have any questions on vouchers?
I said, I hope not because Delisa's in here to answer. I was just kind of chuckling under my breath. I'm like holding my breath that nobody had any major question. I can generally answer a lot of them, but it's real technical. I probably could.
Um, no, I had my questions. I had a few questions. One was, uh, maybe you could just touch on that. Kim is the uh, Sherwinell.
So there's a, um, you can list the number if you wanna find the number. There's a bill to Sherwinell. Sherwinell is the company that, or the construction, the contractor who built Listren Elementary. Um, it went like this. We had, um, a fire suppression tank failure which was really a failure related to a freezing of the pump pipe and different pieces. And I, and I am not gonna get into the technical side of it. Went, so what happened was it was a lot of finger pointing when somebody is held responsible for the bill. When we talked to Clear Risk, they said, they brought up the page in our, our insurance policy and said, no, we're not going to cover this. Sherwinell, Andy Howe, myself, we had a meeting. And everybody is in agreement that there was a failure. That was not the issue. The issue was kind of the chicken and egg issue. Part of the pipe and some of the stuff was original equipment. Part of the equipment was new fittings. Part of it was the old tank. Do you remember when we had the discussion about the water storage tank for the fire and it sloughed off and then it had the pieces in it. We had to drain it. And did when we drained, it was only moisture left in the valve before we got to cold weather, those kinds of things. So, um, because it was not, I attempted to cover it by insurance first. And because it was not covered by insurance, Sherwinell paid half and we paid half.
Always nice to pay for insurance and we pay dues. Uh, any other questions, comments?
How do we keep this from happening again?
Well, I guess I don't know that there really is an answer to keeping that problem from happening again in the respect that now that we have an enclosed pump, wellhouse, fire suppression, we have alarms on things, things are working. Um, so it, it stemmed from the sloughing of the particles that were in the tank and then we replaced a valve. And did valve get replaced? Did it get sealed up? There's, I, I'm gonna go to the old adage of the light on in the pump house. Pardon me, and it doesn't mean we have a light on in the pump house, but what I'm saying is we had an alarm on the pump. Did it not go off because of the sloughing that was already happening and so on and so forth? So I think if Andy was sitting here, he can say all of the alarms are in place. So it should not happen again because we've solved the problem that caused the fixture problem.
I move to approve vouchers.
I'd second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. Everybody's got, Alexander, you got a thumb up? I know. Um, all those in, all those in favor, uh, approving the vouchers? Signify by saying aye, I'm all confused now. Motion carries. Get this. Has been a long night. Next up is first reading of policy and procedure six one one four gifts and donations. We've talked about this multiple times.
Yeah. So I don't think there's any changes from what we move forward.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I'd make a motion to approve policy number sixty one, one four.
I'll second that. Um, it's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of policy and procedure six one one four. Yashimi, Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up is the first reading of policy and procedure thirty two oh four, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment is students prohibitive.
I'm not gonna talk unless you have some question.
I think we've seen this a few times.
You have. And remember this one, there's two procedures because one's the implementation and one's the grievance procedure if someone doesn't comply.
This is just getting in line with state, state requirements, state law.
Yeah, the WASTA sample, it's a WASTA sample policy.
I would make the I would make a motion, uh, first reading of the policy thirty two oh four sex discrimination and sex-based harassment.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of policy and procedure thirty two oh four. Alexander, Cammy, excuse me. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, second reading of policy and procedure forty three, second final reading of policy and procedure forty three hundred, limiting immigrant enforcement in schools. Move to approve the second reading of policy and procedure forty three hundred. Been moved and seconded to approve the second final reading of policy and procedure forty three hundred. Yashimi, Cammy, Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the second reading of policy twenty one oh six, program compliance. Move to approve second reading of policy twenty one oh six.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the second final reading of policy twenty one oh six. Yashimi, Cammy, Alexander. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Uh, next up is consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Um, it's been a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Yashimi, Cammy, Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. All right, that's it for business tonight, moving on to reports.
Delise has submitted her report. I guess the one thing to note is our enrollment was up for February by thirteen.
Thirty-four new students in February is a lot. So crazy.
All right, um. We'll save the questions for when she gets back the next week. Um, Deanna, you're up.
Um, I just wanted to recognize Kevin Gilman, Tatiana, Kano and Jessica Perez. They, Kevin referred, talked to about that. We talked about that presentation where they joined the ARC. Presentation, that national webinar, they did a really great job. They got it, I got a recording of it today. Um, if you want it, I'm happy to send it out to you. They're there with four other districts. Um, we also, because of our ARC data and the growth that our students are experiencing, we've been asked by ARC to do a, they want to do a research study on our district and our, and our student data. Um, the benefit, the primary benefit of it is they can do a correlation study on iReady, ARC and ARC. And, uh, to see along with SBA, if it's a good, if ARC is a good predictive measure, then maybe we can quit doing iReady. iReady. Costs us about a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's very expensive. And if our iReady, if our ARC data is gonna give us what we need, then maybe we don't need to do that anymore for reading. Uh, for our K eight at least. And then, um, I just want to give you heads up, uh, early learning is really up in the air. Uh, there's all kinds of talk and rumors, everything from, um. Everything from, there'll be no E cap next year, that to, there'll be. One T, one TK, two TK, who knows about TK? Three weeks ago, it was one TK, last two TKs, last week it was one TK, this week it's back to what we had last year, which is two TK this year, two years ago. Two TKs, I, who knows? And, um, it is making it very, um, a, a lot of, a lot of uncertainty for families who have applied for those programs. If E cap goes away, that's two full classes of E cap serving three and four-year-olds. Um, it's, it's very uncertain. Um, and I mean, I, I hope that we at least get to keep some of it, but. Boy, there's tens of thousands of kids in E cap.
And so I think people who are listening, E cap is a federal program and so. They, as we know in the state of Washington, they're not playing very well together. And so our transitional kindergarten, kindergarten, kindergarten. With the state financial mess is what's the thing. And so like Deanna says, literally every day we're getting different messages. And so it's also very hard to predict. The legislative session is over April ten-ish unless they extend the session. Um, they have a lot of work to do in forty-five days or so. Does the state fully fund E cap?
No, not so far. Well, we, uh, we expected that they were gonna fully fund TK, but then they haven't.
But not federal funds for TK.
No, it's state. So stay tuned on that one.
We've. I think that was it. Was that it, Dan?
Yep.
And you have my written report in front of you. Basically, things are, are going well. Um, I've touched on most of them in some way or another tonight in the different talking that we've done, um. The, the big thing that I want to do, to do here on some things that the public is always really interested in. The RFQ went out for the Realtor thing. That's a big deal. The old tennis courts, you should start seeing right outside the building here, you should see some movement in the next few weeks. That's one tennis court, six pickleball court, that's a good deal. The, I'm not gonna call it a ribbon cutting, but I'll be out there with my camera on Monday when tennis starts. Because I want to have a picture of those kids on that new tennis court. Um, the friends of the fields, it's gotten a little slow getting started, but we had a real strong meeting. Last night, we're really working on irrigation and chemicals and lawn or, I don't want to call it lawn. Field turf management, bases, lines, track, vector in the track. I mean, all different kinds of things. So it was, it was a really good conversation. Um. And I think that's about it. Um, the only other thing that is, um, relative, extremely relative is the work that we're doing with the city council. In a potential site for a cross-country tap track over at the spray field. And they've invited us back for meeting two to hear more and ask more questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Kim? All right, uh, moving on to board reports, uh, Michelle, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief, um. Tomorrow at seven o'clock is the arts showcase at Prosser High School. I'll be dropping into that, um. FCC LA State Leadership Conference is this upcoming weekend in Spokane, oh wait. Following weekend in Spokane. So as Michael mentioned, there's two groups from the middle school going to do presentations at that state conference. Um, I'll be there to cheer them on. National History Day is Saturday, March eighth, and I think they're still looking for judges for that event, so please reach out. Um, I believe it's to Dean Smith, if you can volunteer to be a judge during that event. Um, I also saw that the eighth grade parent and student night is six PM, March tenth at the high school. So if you have a freshman next year, that'd be a good event to pop into. And then I wanted to congratulate the boys swim team who got four top ten finishes at state last weekend.
Awesome.
Great, thanks, Michelle.
Yeah.
Uh, I just want to thank you guys for putting that, um, that data together for the night. It's always, always good to see how things are going. I'll leave it at that.
Great.
I have nothing.
Lisa?
Um, I attended regional, not regional, our local history night at the middle school a couple of weeks ago, which is always one of the best nights of the year. I was lucky enough to get to judge group and individual performance and it's just. Incredible, it's a duty to do and to say what, um, follow up on Michelle, regional history day is in Prosser for the first time. We've always had to. They've always had to take the kids good early in the morning, go to Yakima, so they're, Prosser always does so well, so. I think they have a total of ninety, ninety volunteers, so half the day, part, the whole day. Um, you're, you're just gonna leave the day feeling smarter, learn something for sure and you'll feel great about what you've given.
Is it at the middle school?
It's going to be the high school.
At the high school in the.
All over.
Thanks. Great, thank you. Um, I don't have much. I did attend the senior fundraising dinner for the safe and, uh, sober graduation. Um, so I think it was well-attended, you know, it, it always. I guess it shouldn't surprise me, but this community is very generous, um, very willing to help the kids of our community. And at last I heard, I think they were just really close to what, um, what they were budgeting for, the amount that they were looking at. Um, so I think they were able to achieve all their funds and, and, uh, I got to be a live auctioneer for the first time in my life and probably the last, so. Uh, with that, uh, our next meetings will be, uh, safety and security, March twelfth, right, oh, uh, room one thirty, five PM. Uh, regular board meeting, March twelfth, right here at six PM. And with that, we are going to recess into executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one G. No action to follow mid-year value superintendent's evaluation. Uh, to include the board of directors and superintendent Kim Casey. Uh, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employer to review the performance of a public employee. However, subject to RCW forty-two thirty-one forty-four, discussion by governing body of salaries, wages. And other conditions of employment to be generally applied within the agency shall occur in a meeting open to the public. And when a governing body elects to take final action, hiring, setting the salary of an individual employee. Or a class of employees or discharging or disciplining an employee, the action shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. And this will last until eight forty-nine, we'll read the name.